Trying to get in.
Good evening, anyone, everyone. It's seven thirty two P M. There was a slight delay due to an update issue with my computer and Zoom. I'm not sure if it required me to have a fifteen point four version. I didn't understand that. We do have four in attendance. We're waiting for Alan to log in.
Who said they couldn't make this meeting? There were, there were some people that weren't able to make it. Do you remember?
I'm sorry, I do not. I know we had a quorum.
Shirley's logging in also.
Yeah, we had five totals, so I would say I remember on everyone on the screen confirming.
Hi Shirley.
Yes.
I'm emailing Alan at this time. I know that the recording has started. We can definitely start the meeting and and wait for for Alan when he joins.
Well, we can, I can call the meeting to order and I can have, let me have the secretary read the call of the meeting because Alan's a regular member, so we would want him to sit if possible. Do you have the the call of the meeting Shirley?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you read that?
Okay. This appeared in the Hartford Current, published April twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, Zone Six, and May fifth, twenty twenty three, Zone Six. Legal notice Town of Bloomfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby given that the zoning Board of Appeals will conduct public hearings at a special meeting on May eighth, twenty twenty three, commencing at seven thirty P M via the Zoom platform to consider the following. A variance request from Sections eight point one, point D, point one, Section eight, point one, point E, point one, and Sections six, point three, point G of Bloomfield's zoning regulations to allow a proposed addition for an elevator shaft and a forty foot square business multi-tenant freestanding sign at one twelve, one sixteen Cottage Grove Road, R ten Zone Residential District. Applicant and owner Cottage Grove Road Circle LLC. Number two, Certificate of Approval of Location per Section nine point eight of Bloomfield's zoning regulations for a used car dealer and repair shop at fifteen Southwood Drive. I two Industrial District applicant Yonell Medina, and I apologize if I pronounced your first name wrong. Agent Owner K and S Southwood LLC. A full copy of the applicant, applications are available for inspection at the Planning Office at Town Hall. Application materials are also available on the Zoning Board of Appeals Section of the Town's website. At this meeting, interested persons may be heard and written communication received. Information for how to attend this meeting with virtually will be published on the what Board's website and meeting agenda a minimum of twenty-four hours before the meeting. This was dated Bloomfield, Connecticut, this twenty-fifth day of April twenty twenty-three. Zoning Board of Appeals Shirley P. Williams, Secretary.
Thank you. He just, he says he can't get in.
I know, I don't see him in the guest list.
You sent him the link though, right? Today?
We should have, so I don't.
He didn't get, he said he didn't get it yesterday or today from Justin.
It might have been that he was originally not going to make it and maybe Justin didn't include him. That's the only thought, but even as logging in, he should have been able to registered and it should have let him in. I don't understand what's going on and I apologize as I'm only made a host. I don't have access to Justin's account, so unfortunately. Maybe he can conference call, I'll send them the agenda that I did.
Does he have the agenda because he could go where it says? If you wish to to view the hearing or testify, and if he put in the link there, if he go to Google or Chrome and put in that link, he can come in as an attendee. You can make him a host. That's basically what I had to do. I mean, I'm sorry, you can make him a panelist.
Okay, so not, not to delay the meeting. Tiffany sat last time Jennifer, at least for the first application. You'll, you'll be voting and then if Alan does get in, he can, he can do the second application. Okay, so the first application is the variance request. Can we, do we have somebody there that's, that you can?
The first application is the variance for one one twelve, one sixteen Cottage Grove Road. We do have Ms. Shelby Young. She's attendance. I am going to promote her to a panelist now. And she is seeking to have a fifteen feet by fifteen feet shaft, elevator shaft to provide ADA access to the second floor at one one twelve Cottage Grove Road. And Ms. Shelby Young, can you hear us? You're muted.
Yes, I can.
Hi, hi Shelby. I'm, if you could tell us, if you can state both your name and address for the record and then tell us what you want to do here.
Okay, my name is Shelby Young. I'm co-owner of Cottage Grove Circle LLC. It's a three building complex down off of Blue Hills Avenue, Cottage Grove Road. And well, we're, oh, the location is one twelve Cottage Grove Road, Bloomfield. Did you want my, my personal?
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-one Alexander Road, Bloomfield, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Okay, and so what we're trying to do is for the seniors and the handicap. What's happening? We have a two-story and the seniors, we have to keep doing business on the first floor because whether it's the seniors or the handicap people, they can't walk up the stairs. So a lot of our small businesses, and we have like fourteen small businesses in the, in the larger building. So they've asked over and over and over, Shelby, can you get an elevator? Can you get an elevator? So we're asking for funding. We're trying to see if we can get some funding.
Wow, then, okay.
For, you know, and then also, one of the interesting things is that a lot of the community, I mean, like we basically advertised by word of mouth. And we're really helping the community. This is like a one-stop shop. So what we want to do is put a multi-tenant sign out in the front so that the whole entire community and, and Greater Hartford can see what we're doing in this one small complex. So that too is part of some of the funding that we're trying to get. So we're hoping that you guys, and we appreciate, you know, your time to support this activity.
So this would be one, one sign that would list all the ten, all the businesses. Okay, where, where is this elevator shaft going to be? We, we got a picture of a building with some parking spots. That's all I got.
I, I can share. I just received it this afternoon. I apologize. I've been working with Bob Heard on this and he provided a scaled plot plan for this small addition and I will share it with you.
When was this building built Shelby?
Um, I think nineteen, oh boy, I don't even.
Oh, it looks new.
It looks new? Oh, thank you. It doesn't look it, but you know.
This picture does.
This has been, I think nineteen fifty something.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, so it's been kind of hard, you know, the, the elder, you know, they just they can't do it anymore. These stairs is just, just too much.
I'm opening up the sketch, the plot plan for this location here. One moment. Ah, site plan. Okay. Boy. Okay. Uh, this is one twelve, one sixteen Cottage Grove Road. If you're familiar with it Chapel Street. Um, we're looking right at the site. Um, here to the east is Chapel Street Cottage Grove. It's to the south. These are the two structures. The elevator shaft is going to be a small bump out, a ten by fifteen with a ramp going north this way.
Where that shaded area is.
Correct. Currently, this is already an existing ADA parking on this, on these two sides, so the location is perfect. And it so happened that this here was a landscaped area. So we won't be losing any parking spaces due to the bump out. Um, this is the non-conforming structure. It's a a multi-tenant building with, with services for elderly and other services for the community. Um, so yeah, there's two entrances and I can show you a better picture through G I S so you can see a better layout of the condition, but this is the small bump out here. Basically, they're asking for a variance to enlarge the footprint of this non-conforming structure for the purposes of the elevator shaft there. And then the signage is going to be in this corner, which is going to meet the, the setback requirements for, for a sign, usually a business sign, which has to be about on fifteen feet off the driveway, which is over here and ten feet from a right-of-way.
Is it, is it going to meet the overall size?
Uh, it'll meet the size for a business sign. It would. Forty square feet is the maximum size allowed. They're requesting for forty square feet. Um, so that's that. Would you like to see a G I S overview?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, maybe you can just put a quick on my staff report. This is, oh, it didn't show it. I thought it was the overview. This is the entrance here and they have another one here. This, the signage will not be in this corner, but it will be in their property and I think they measured it at about I want to say about was it twenty-five or thirty feet off of, of the, the curb here, which this is the state's right-of-way? So they cannot put it within this area.
And they will put it on their own property and.
Right, it is on their own property and it is a landscaped area here. This is where they will be putting the sign. We did go over the plot plan and had marked it off. I do want to confirm I don't have that here, but it is in this area corner here. Um, this is the building in question that's going to be expanded. The bump out will be there. And then just for a G I S overview, I'll put it.
There you go, okay.
All right. Uh, this is where it's going to be. It's going to bump out this way.
And it's going to be on, on the grass there.
Right, right. This here is just a, a ramp. That's going to be removed.
Okay.
But the bump out will stay within this area here. And then the ramp will go out this way versus um, you know, just going out to this area. The parking spaces are the ADA parking. And then again, the freestanding sign, they're aware they might have to trim the bush and or a tree in this area and/or they can place it in this area.
So that's chapel, that's on the chapel?
This is, this is Cottage Grove Road. But if they want to angle it this way, and I'm not sure they want to do that, or they can, you know, uh, it depends on their orientation, but it will be definitely, and I can simple measure this from the curb uh, about forty feet actually. Plus or minus. From the state's right-of-way or the curb. I don't, I don't believe they have, um, you know, the renderings are, are not completed, but they did.
Well, they're, they're looking for, they're still trying to get funding, it sounds like.
Correct.
Get everything in place first.
Correct. And they did mention that it would be non-illuminated. They understand that there are residential properties abutting this property here in the north and then in the west side here. And here, you know, this is town of Bloomfield's property over to the east.
Any, any, anybody on the board have any questions?
My question is, will the sign be facing Cottage Grove Road or Chapel Street, or will it be kind of angled so that it, so it's catty corner, that corner?
Probably going to be. It's probably going to be catty court corner, like you said.
Okay.
Other questions? Go ahead Shirley.
I, I'm just thinking about it being catty corner. So if you're going um, down Cottage Grove Road but toward Blue Hills Avenue.
It's going to be that curve, that curve. You, you, you see like right where she, not over more? It's going to be more where you can see it from Cottage Grove Road both ways.
Okay, that's, that was my question, okay.
That would, that would be the more important.
Yeah, that was, that was what I wanted to know.
It's still like a little angle though, if you're, if you're standing right there, like a little angle.
Now, I, I, I do have a question and, and I wasn't sure whether this sign here pertained to this building. There, this is a freestanding sign, correct?
Yes.
So you are, so is this going to go away?
Um, I don't think it has to. I don't think it has to.
If you want to put one here, so you're asking for a second freestanding sign.
This, this sign right here is, is really for just one business. Are we going to move it?
No, where, where, where is the other sign?
Right, this sign right here. This is a freestanding sign here.
Doesn't it have to go away? Isn't it just one per parcel?
Yeah, they're telling us that they, they do have to move it.
Yeah, it, it is only one freestanding sign per building, so it would be, if it's going to be multi-tenant, then they would have to share it.
Okay, that's, okay.
Um, so if you're going to propose, you, you might just want to propose to reface this one. And/or I don't think this one, it doesn't look like it's forty square feet. What you could do is get a variance to allow for forty square feet and then have the multi-tenant.
Wait. I thought she said that they're going to take that one out when they put the new one in.
That's what we're going to do.
Oh, okay.
So it's only going to be one sign Linda. Any, any other questions?
Um, I have another question. Will there be a sign on the bump out where the elevator is going to go to let people know that there is an elevator in that, that building? Or is that the only entrance into the building?
That's the only entrance right there into the building.
Okay, all right.
And the ramp's going to go to, up to the elevator shaft?
Yes. When you, you saying from the out, from the bump out?
Yeah, she said that we're going to move, the ramp's going to be moved around where her, where her cursor is right now. So the, the ramp is going to come up and that's going to go to the door where the elevator is?
Yes.
Linda, any, any staff comments on this?
Uh, no, no comments. It's not going to encroach further into the setback. I think there is a need for, you know, to provide for ADA access to the second floor, especially if they're providing services to elderly. The building is a non-conforming building and a non-conforming use that's been there that predates the regulations. Um, but there is a need for it and it's, it's pretty unique in, in the area and I know it's an R ten zone, but the structure and use are pretty unique. They do provide community services there and I think it's important to, to have access.
And it's not going to change, I'm sorry.
Definitely not going to change the character of the neighborhood at, at all. I think it's, it's if anything. I, I know they, they, the property's pretty well kept and it's managed. I, I know Ms. Shelby and I spoke and it looks like it's well maintained. I, I really don't think it's going to decrease the value of any other property around the area by providing that access. And you know, that service to the community. The freestanding sign, there's already one on site. And having a multi-tenant for the other services that they do provide. I think there's a need in the community for it. I don't think that's going to substantially change also the character as it's not going to be illuminated. It is setback from the road. As you, you know, I mentioned it's forty feet from the curb on, on this corner. Um, and about the same, if you really think about from the curb to here, it looks about forty to fifty feet. Uh, so there, you know, it's, it's pretty setback from, from the road.
Okay, I'd like to ask another question about the sign. How will it be supported? Are you just going to have two legs under it to support it, or is it going to be some kind of decoration on top?
You said decoration?
Um, I said decoration like a fancy top to it. Or is it going to look like what, what we have? Just a plain square?
Well, we're going to be, we're going to be working with the, with the planning and zoning team for the design part. So, I mean, but I, I don't think it's going to be any, you know, really it's just trying to get the businesses recognition for our community because it's great businesses. It's really not so much about how the sign looks. It's just trying to give the community the awareness that these need-based services exist in their community. So, I mean, as far as the design is going to be pretty, you know, basic. Nothing really fancy.
Okay, basic, easy, easy to read.
Easy to read.
Driving by.
Yeah, because we also, this, this, this area is used really a lot on the east side of Bloomfield. And again, it's not just Bloomfield residents, Greater Hartford residents. We have people who take the bus who, you know, walk. So we want to make sure that we give the community enough information now that this does exist, you know what I mean?
I, I have a quick question about the elevator shaft. Is that going to match the outside of the building or what? Do you, do you have pictures of it yet or not?
I can. I can give you just a, a quick. They did submit. Uh, this is somewhat of what they were thinking. So it's a double pole-mounted pet scale type double pole-mounted sign.
I'm sorry, what did you say? Did you say a double pole-mounted?
Yeah, this is double pole. It looks like a double pole, two pole, yeah. And I'm sorry about the orientation. I know this here is oriented towards the parking lot. That changed. So it, it is now oriented, as I mentioned, in the plot plan with Bob Heard. Uh, so it, this, this is the, the bump out shaft, how it's a very preliminary, yeah, I orientation of this.
Oh, okay, so it's going to match it.
But yes, the plan is to match the existing building. And once, you know, their funding is approved, they will provide the architectural renderings for it when applying for the building permit.
And that'll just go to, to planning and zoning?
Yep, it'll go to the building department. Uh, for, for yes, for zoning review as well.
Is there anybody else here in the in the participants that wants to speak on this application?
Let's see here, one moment, I have, oh, no, no one. There's no questions. No one's raising their hands.
The board, is board all set? Does the board have any other questions before we close the public hearing?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
And so am I.
So Alan, since you weren't here at the beginning, Jennifer is voting on this application and then you'll, you'll you'll do the set, you'll do the second application, okay?
I'm not, I'm not an alternate.
No, but you weren't here when we started. So you didn't hear the beginning of, of Shelby's discussion. So I just, I just waited, but I couldn't wait any longer, so I started.
I never got a link from Justin or anybody for this meeting.
Yeah, wait, why don't we talk about that later?
Okay.
Okay, but we definitely need to discuss that. I agree. Um, okay, so is there anything else on this application? Shelby, do you have anything else you want to add at this time before I close the public hearing?
No, no, I'm, I think pretty much you guys get the gist of what we're going to be changing.
Okay, all right. So I need somebody to make a motion. I think we want to also put in the motion that the other sign will will be taken down when the new sign is put up so that we're not going against our regulation on that. So I'm going to close the public hearing and who would like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you Shirley.
I move that we accept the variance request from, from Section eight, point one, point D, point one, Section eight, point one, point E, point one, and Section six, point three, point G. Point one, section eight point one point E point one and section six point three point G. Of the Bloomfield zoning regulations to allow a proposed addition. Uh, for an elevator shaft and a forty foot square. Uh, foot sign, business, business multi, multi-tenant. Uh, freestanding sign at one twelve, one sixteen Cottage Grove Road, R ten zone residential district. Um, the, let's see, um applicant and the owner are Cottage Grove Road. Uh, Circle LLC and that also the original sign that's there now be removed before this one gets placed.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 To, uh, Seth, did you vote?
Yeah, yeah, I said aye.
Okay, I, I heard a lot of ayes. I didn't, wasn't sure where they came from. Okay. So the motion passes five to zero. Um, okay, alright, so Shelby, you're all set.
Okay, thank you guys so much. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll be in touch, Shelby.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye, bye-bye.
Bye, Mark.
Bye, Shelby.
Bye, Jennifer. Bye, guys.
Bye. Okay, so this application, um, Alan's here for, so we need, uh. The applicant.
Uh, we do have the applicant's agent. Who is here representing. KNS. Uh, Southwood LLC, Johnny Al Medina.
Okay. So, um, sir, can you state your name and address for the record?
So I'm Attorney Manjafico. I represent KNS Properties LLC. I'm the attorney for the LLC.
Okay. Alright, and you want to, um. Explain to us what your, what your client wants to do here?
Yes, so on April fourth, we were in front of the board, the zoning, planning and zoning commission. For a special permit to allow a used car. And repair site at fifteen Southwood Drive. That was approved. And now we're here for part two. Just to have the certificate of approval of the location. So this has already been to the zoning commission, already approved. We got a, uh, a favorable. Letter from Justin endorsing the location as a repair and used car location. I'm not sure if you have any questions at this time for me.
And, and. And were there restrictions on that as far as how many cars and that?
There were restrictions. Seven used cars can be sold. And that restriction was already put in.
Okay.
And agreed to.
Okay.
That was the only restriction that was put on.
Hours, not hours of operation or anything like that?
It's twenty-four hours. Uh, it was previously already zoned. Twenty-four hours, that's because sometimes they're gonna have tow trucks showing up to drop off cars. So it's gotta be available.
So how many cars in total can you have on your lot at any one given time?
At any one given time, there's gonna be seven cars for sale.
How many, how many can be on the lot?
That has not been, right, that was not given as a restriction. Previously, this property was used uh by rider truck where they were parking. Thirty, I believe, car or truck with trailers in the back. Each. Spot that housed a trailer is approximately three cars. So there's plenty of capacity to, to go up to ninety cars parked in the back. I'm not saying there's gonna be ninety cars, but that was the previous usage of amount of space used for parking in the rear.
So just to be clear. There was no discussion on how many vehicles can be stored. On the property at any given time, and I'm not saying the cars for sale. I'm saying the cars that are going to be serviced, the cars that are gonna be just parked there.
Junk?
Yeah.
I don't think there's, I mean, the plan is not to have any junk on there, but, uh. There was no restriction on the amount of cars that could be parked. The. Plan that was submitted showed parking in the rear, seven used cars. And I believe it was five or six spots in the front for customers. And then another three spots for, uh, employees.
So customer spots, so. The cars that get towed there that are not for sale are not to be in the front at all?
No, no, every, oh, the only cars in the front that are visible.
Are the seven cars that are gonna be for sale, the employee spots and the customer spots?
Correct.
Um, Linda?
I am here. Good evening, commissioners, um, Linda Lariano. Uh, staff to the commission. So the reason why this application is before you is, is per, uh. Um, section. I have it here, the regulation states, um. Section nine point eight, I'm gonna show my quick staff report, just so you have an idea of. Why we're here today, even though the planning and zoning commission, um, uh. They made an application for a special permit. The, uh, regulations require a special use permit for a used car dealer and repair shop. Uh, this was previously a repair shop for, uh, M and M trucks. However, uh, because they wouldn't use cars, um, we had to go before, uh, the planning and zoning commission to allow for that special use. Um, and, and also because, uh, section nine point eight requires. Um, through the new general statute or, uh, the change in the statutes which requires. The zoning board of appeals with, uh, to review the application for a certificate of approval. Um, whenever someone's making an application for such use. Um, I'm just gonna share that section with you so that you understand, uh, why, um. Uh, you're reviewing this, uh, a proof of location. Um, and yes, it was granted, the special permit was granted March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three by the planning and zoning commission. Uh, where, um, only seven cars may be displayed for sale on the property at any given time. The reason why seven was because that is what the applicant sought for. Uh, the site could definitely have more vehicles if, uh, he wanted to, but, uh, he wanted to keep it for seven cars. Uh, for, for display, uh, sale. Um. Uh, and, uh, keep, keep the remaining spots for, for the trucks, uh, which predates, um, or. Was already existing for the repair, um, and storage of those trucks on his property. Let's see, I'm gonna share this quick staff report with you and. Okay, here's the staff report, um, the application type is certificate of location approval, which. You probably haven't seen, I don't think this process has been followed, um, with the town, um. In, in the past, this is the subject site on Southwood. Um, the, it's surrounded by I two districts, um. Uh, to the north, south, east and west. Uh, the Department of Public Works is actually, uh, right down here to the south. Uh, the legal standard is nine point eight. Um, and it's in reviewing a certificate of location approval application. Uh, the commission acts as an agent to the state of Connecticut. Not in a zoning capacity and the notice provisions and other provisions of chapter one twenty-four does not apply. Um, as an agent of the state of Connecticut, the commissions. Or the commission serves solely to determine whether the certificate of approval should be issued based upon, uh, such consideration as. Whether the use is permitted in the zoning district. Uh, the suitability of the location and view of traffic intersecting streets with of highway. Effect on public travel and other conditions, the relationship of the proposed use or operation with respect to schools. Uh, church, uh, churches, uh, theaters, playhouse and other places of public gather. Uh, gatherings, whether the proposed use of location would imperil the safety and welfare of the public. Whether the proposed use of location would have a detrimental effect on the value of nearby properties or development. Or whether there has been material change in conditions which might reverse the decision of granting or denying, uh, previous applications. Um, then, uh, chapter, uh, fourteen fifty-two, uh, Connecticut general statutes. Uh, gives the zoning board of appeals, uh, you have the legal authority to, uh, grant. These certificate of locations or approve of locations, uh, based on the statute. Whenever there is a, uh, planning and zoning combined, the board of appeals, uh, is, uh, determining, um. Body who, who makes the decisions for these certificates. This is the reason why it is before you. Uh, just so you have an understanding. And then there are two motions of approval, one to approve it. Based on the standards in section nine eight. And one to deny based on the same standards. Um, so i- i- it was approved for seven vehicles for, for used car dealer. That is what the applicant is seeking. Um, it's ultimately, um. Received already the special use permit. Uh, you're just reviewing this. Uh, as the standards that I just outlined in section nine point eight.
So we have, just so I understand, we have no say in how many cars could be. There for repair. I, I, I'm just, I'm asking this question because of course we've run into issues. In other places in town. And this is, you know, set up for the same type of thing to happen. To the neighborhood, where if you end up just loading it up with cars and not having any. Any, uh, top limit.
Well, it, it, it had previously, uh, it, it, so this, this has, uh, it, or it had, um. And I think it's probably still existing, um. There, there are storage of vehicles on this property already. Um, I believe it's up to, uh, twenty to thirty trailers in the back, um.
But she said three, you could fit three cars for a trailer, then you're talking ninety cars.
In the rear, yeah.
Yes.
I, I don't think that, that would be the intent of, of the, I, I know we talk about, you know, the intent, but sometimes. Change in ownership, um, you know, if it's not clear on the record, um.
Right, and that could be detrimental to the property.
Right.
And so that's my, that's my concern. Anybody else have any concerns?
Yeah, I have a concern, if it was.
That Alan.
If it was permitted for trailers, that's not cars. It's not the same type of operation. And I think that we have to be careful on what we approve. Because of other pending applications or issues. Um, I think we have to limit them to the seven cars for sale. And they have to be clearly marked as for sale. Um, and. As far as the rest of the property. As long as their cars in process, I have no problem with them. But if they're gonna turn into a junkyard, that's something else. And the property to the west, I believe, is vacant land, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, that could be an issue down the road, what we do here.
Well, this is wetlands here, um, I, I don't, I don't know that.
I think if you expand out, you'll see.
Yep, I can go to GIS and expand more, uh, one moment.
I think that was something you were touching on too, Seth, correct?
I think that I, you're thinking the same thing I was, Jackie.
Yeah.
Exact same thing, verbatim.
Then my, my additional question is the length of talk, time that the cars. That are still there will be still there. I mean, is it indefinite? How do we know that they're gonna be moved out and, and? Really, I think that you, you have ninety cars there. There is an opportunity for. The element to start living in those cars. So I, I have a concern about that as well, because we really don't, even though you say it's not. Going to be a junkyard, we don't want it to turn into a junkyard in Bloomfield. So it's the number of cars, it's the length of car, that the length of time that the cars are going to be there. You know, uh, is there any restriction or any parameters that are guiding, um. This, this business to say, okay, you know, you gotta move some of these cars around. Where are we with that?
A- and Linda, can we put some restrictions on, or are we only?
No, this is. Certificate, yeah, this is just, uh, the appropriateness, the certificate of, of location based on those standards that you look at. Um, you know, the, the, it did receive a site plan approval for this site. I just. Can you see the screen or do I need to reshare?
Um, the only thing we see is that you're yellow. Oh, there you go.
Okay, this is all conservation land here. Um, I believe, um, there is no, is it conservation? Um, alright, I'm, yep. So it's there, you know, there, for a potential development to go here, it's not gonna happen unless.
Right next to it, above it.
Right, um, and then, again, this property here in the rear, there's no, um. I wanna say, just a, a quick simple measure, but there, this is a buffer here with wetlands because you're within that. Um, you know, it's, it's about, you know, eighty-five to ninety feet. Of, um, you know, area that, on the property that will not be developed. On this side here, um, this is the, the current, um, gravel. Or the surface, uh, that is being utilized on the property. I did go by fifteen Southwood and I have to say that, uh, KNS, uh, Johnny Al, the, the new property owner. Has cleaned up this property since, a lot, um, and it, it. Uh, the trailers that went are back that at some point were all over the yard are actually really nice, um, since he took over. Um, you know, they're, they're pretty stacked neatly in a row, um, and, uh, it, it's, it's actually. A lot better looking than it was before. So I know you're seeing this aerial here from two thousand nineteen, but that is not what it looks like now. Um, the, these trailers here are, are, are right here. Um, and he does not plan on parking any vehicles on this side. This wasn't supposed to be for parking. Uh, and I do wanna share with you the site plan that was approved so that you have an idea of, uh. How the cars should be aligned and, and that site plan will be enforced accordingly. Um, you know, as, as long as I'm here, um, so. Southwood plans.
Yeah, Linda, Linda, the problem is, as we all know, is it looks great now, it might look good in five years. But with a variance or, or the certificate, thirty years down the road, it could look very different. I mean, what can we put into place now? That will protect the future and the neighborhood down the road.
Alright, well, this is the, 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 the areas of parking, I, and I understand, um, I. And I understand your concerns as, you know, we, there are other, uh, properties here that have, um. I guess, um. You know, have not either complied or, or have not been kept up with. Um, and, you know, excessive vehicles on the property for storage. On outdoor storage of materials and all of that. Uh, what's unique about this lot though, and, um, the new property owner, um, you know, I did go inside and see this is that. It, it, there is a large area, um, I wanna say a little over forty. Let's zoom in to see how big this building is here, where, um. Four thousand fifty square feet. Um, cars, you know, for repair, anything that's gonna be repaired is actually in here. Um, and a lot of.
There, show me again, I'm sorry. There, show me again, I'm sorry.
Well, there's, there's four, there's, there's four, I believe, overhead.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, the vehicles that. Will be worked on and or repaired will be stored inside at all times, so you're not gonna see inoperable. Vehicles or, you know, vehicles in need for repair, um, just sitting out. You know, not being worked on, um, you know, according to Mr. Medina, they will be stored inside, repaired inside. Um, and, uh, that's his plan. Um, you know, what other property owners in the future might do, we, we, I do not know, um, I guess this is. A case where, um, uh, enforcement has to come into place and. Uh, either put something in there that maybe the property should be inspected once a year, um, uh.
Could we put that restriction on or?
No, uh, you can put a condition where the, uh, property owner, um, shall allow, uh. For staff to, uh, inspect the property once a year, um, yeah, we. We could have that in there.
And the other question is, could we put a time limit, like, um, to review this in three or five years? So that if it isn't looking good at that time, we can. Do something.
This is the thing, the, the use is already granted through a special permit use, I, I guess, I, I don't wanna kind of just go out of. What, you know, uh, the reasons why you're reviewing this for certificate. It's really the appropriateness of the use. At the zoning district on the site, that's.
Correct, but when you were showing those reasons there, um, there was, there was a good, there was a reason there to not. Approve it, the.
Okay.
If we, if, if the members of this commission felt that it, it might not meet that.
Um.
You have them up, but I don't have them, we don't.
You would have to state in, in the record the reason why it doesn't need it, so whether the use is permitted, it is a permitted use. The suitability of the location and view of traffic. Um, uh, the relationship of the proposed use or operation with respect to schools, it's not near, uh, schools, churches or theater, playhouse or. Public gatherings.
I think we're looking at number five.
Oh, okay, whether the proposed use would have a detrimental effect on value of nearby properties or development thereof. Um, there are.
Yeah, wait, can you leave it there for just a sec so I can copy that?
Okay.
I'm sorry, uh, detrimental effect on the value. Value, um, nearby. Properties.
I'm just going to do this. I'm sorry, I'm just recording.
Okay, alright, I just, okay, I, I, any other, any other. Questions or comments?
I, I had one, I had one comment for the applicant. Um, did I hear you say that there are trailers or trucks stored on the property now and that they will be?
Not right now, rider truck, we, we occupied the property. They're no longer there, but when staff was there, rider was still there in March, they're no longer there. It's empty.
Okay.
And if you look at the survey, it shows there's a retention pond in the back. The cars for sale and employees slash customers are up front. All the other parking is in the rear, there's not gonna be a bunch of cars lined up. The plan was approved by the commission, showed the parking only in the rear, so. The town is well within its rights to enforce, if they start seeing junk cars. Lined up on the side of the building and in the front, they can enforce that. It's not that the town can't come in and, and enforce things. It's that we were already in front of the commission, the site plan was approved as it was. My understanding, I was the chairman of the zoning board in New Britain for seven years. Um, I've, I've done a lot of these because New Britain has a lot of used car sales in the town, so I, I've seen lots of these. Um, once we approve it, um, once we approved it, we were done. We couldn't later put other conditions on it. Today's hearing is to whether this is. Um, acceptable or not acceptable, you're acting on behalf of the state of Connecticut. Um, and, and there's only those six conditions that you look at, and I believe we meet all of those requirements.
I do have a clarifying question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So you're talking about, I, I'm talking specifically about the cars that are gonna be stored or stowed in the back of the property. And, uh, I think we're, we're looking at possibly ninety vehicles, am I correct?
This lot was previously approved. For thirty tractors, if you look at the people that were there before Mr. Medina. They had cars lined up everywhere, it was disorganized, they had more than they were supposed to. But the.
My, my question is specifically, I'm sorry for cutting you off. My question is specifically, um, that number of, of vehicles, you're seeing thirty tractors. Three cars, eh, per tractor, right, so I'm, I'm thinking maybe ninety vehicles, is that correct?
What I'm saying is the area that was approved for parking in the rear, that was previously already approved. For the thirty tractor trailers would be equivalent to ninety cars now. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's the number I was, I was trying to get affirmation on. And so those are the vehicles that are going to be worked on, yes or no?
If he's got ten tractors, tractor trailers, because he's gonna work on tractor trailers, then that would be ten tractor trailers. And maybe he would have some cars on the side, so we're saying the parking area. Is limited to the space as shown on the. Plan, and it's gonna be a mix of tractor trailers, cars, trucks. But we're saying that area, and that's enforceable by the town, that's what was approved by the town. That site plan with the parking area showed.
Okay, so I got that, I got that, what my question was leading to was the waste from working on the vehicles. Um, for that size lot with the vehicles that are going to be worked on, what happens with the waste from working on those vehicles?
The state of Connecticut, D E E P, has regulations. Um, I know they come out and inspect because I have clients that own auto bodies and car dealership. Cars, they have to follow certain regulations for oil, grit separators, uh. They, they can't just leak, leak stuff everywhere, that's inspected by the, by the, uh, state of Connecticut. So there's not really gonna be any waste that's left all over the place. There are.
I can speak to that, yes, that the E P will, will come out if that is the case. Uh, when they submit their application to the state of Connecticut, um, they do, uh, you know, they, they have to show all of that. Um, so it, it's, it's just not, it doesn't stop here, um. They, they do become involved and they have to have a, a disposal plan and all of that for all their waste, so. I just want to, uh, let you know.
A- a- and, and also, this exact, this is not the last stop, this is just a certificate that the site. Is approved for this use, and then he goes on to the state of Connecticut and has to. Show what he's gonna do, where he's gonna store the oil, where the cars are gonna be, everything gets looked at again, and they come out and inspect.
Exactly, I got a question.
Yep.
More of a statement, um, although I appreciate the applicant's, um. Candor, I can't vote for this because of lack of detail where the cars are gonna be. The, the, the cars for sale are gonna be, uh, placed on the light, on the site. With a, a site plan approval from, uh, the zoning board, um, and for us to do it. Um, we'd be looking at a major issue with other lawsuits. If we don't do some kind of enforcement or some kind of regulatory of where the cars are placed.
If I may, that was approved and where the cars are placed is on the site plan and it was approved by the commission. The site plan shows the cars for sale, the site plan shows the employee parking, and the site plan shows. Parking of other cars in the rear.
Seven cars for display back here, I, I just wanna show this again, um, for employee parking in the front. These are two existing ADA, uh, parkings here, um, and then, uh.
Where, where are the new cars placed?
Twenty four, the, the.
The used cars for sale, there are no new cars.
Okay, I'm sorry, the used car for sale, where are they placed?
Seven car display right in the rear here, one, two, three. Four, five, six, seven.
Correct.
Well, those are marked seven car display parking spaces?
Correct.
Yeah.
That doesn't say seven cars for sale.
Or.
So, so it's gonna be specific, there is gonna be each car that's for sale will be marked as for sale. The spots that are for employees will be marked as employee spots, so. Uh, and the customer spots will be marked as customer spots so that. A staff member walking by there or driving by there who wants to come and take a look will be able to know. If, if they have more than seven cars that are for sale.
That is correct. And he won't have more than, he could have requested more than seven, he doesn't want more than seven.
Uh, Joyce, you had a question? Do you have your hand up? Wait, your hands, your hands raised? Okay. Um. Okay. Alright, any, anybody else have any questions?
I'm just worried, Jackie, that we're gonna, we're setting ourselves up for a problem like we had in the past.
Correct, correct, I mean, you know, the owner had good intentions and then they didn't, so. That, that's sort of, we've been burned once on this, so that's, I think, um. The thought with some of our members here. Uh, attorney, eh, we've had problems in the past, we're still having problems with certain sites. And not being able to identify to, to limit the amount of cars for storage. Really leaves us in a tight spot here.
I, I understand, but if I may, when we were in front of the commission on April fourth. They put all the conditions, they asked all the questions, that was the time for them. And that's when they said seven cars for sale, here's your site plan, all the parking in the rear. That was the governmental body to put the conditions on this site. Today, it's, is it suitable or not suitable? That's all we're looking at. The suitability of the site, it's already been approved.
I understand that. But it could, it could be, it could have a detrimental effect on the value of neighboring properties. Depending on what that site ends up looking like. And not even with your client, your client in two years can sell it to somebody else and then we're stuck with whoever comes in there.
The neighbor to the rear, there are no properties.
There are neighbors to the, on the either side.
Yeah, one is the town. And on the other side is another commercial property, there's no residential property in this area. It's, it's all industrial zoned in this area.
Mm-hmm. Hey, thank you. Linda, do you have anything else?
Um, I do wanna add. Um, as, as I mentioned, um, you know, why we're here before you about this, you know, the suitability and also I understand your concern. With previous properties and owners, um, you know. It's hard because when, when you do get a property owner who cares about his properties, put a lot of into work. It, it's almost, um, you know, do, not fair to the new property owner who's trying to do the right thing. Um, I've seen people come and go, I've been in, in zoning for fifteen years. I can't say what's gonna happen in the future, I'm, I'm very honest. Um, I, I believe that the use is suitable for the I two according to the regulations and the use. I understand the commission's or the board's concern about, uh, the possibility of. Uh, this becoming a junkyard, that's when enforcement has to come into place, this is not a junkyard. Um, so that will be enforced by zoning, uh, if, if it ever became or ever came to that, um. Uh, we, we, you know, but by means of, of this, we could definitely, uh, do inspections every six months versus every year. Um, if needed, um, for compliance, um.
And can we put that into our motion for yearly inspections?
I mean, you could if you wanted to, yes, we, we, you know, pending that, um, uh. We, we, you know, make, make that a condition that inspection shall be performed for compliance. Um, every six months, that would be fine, um, and, and again, uh. There's a bunch of other, you know, uses on this property that are similar to what is happening there. Um, again, and from, from the time where, I know he's owned it for several months now. Uh, and he has already an existing use for repair is what I wanna get to here, that if, if, if that is your major. The most major concern, um. He wouldn't have to come before you, that use was already there, we're here before you because of the used car. Um, and the approval of location, a certificate of location because of that. If, if those seven used cars for sale went away, then we wouldn't be here before you. Uh, again, uh, there was already a use there where a, a sign off. Uh, all that needed was a zoning sign off because it was already existing, um, and it was just a change of ownership. Um, but, but again, we, we, we are here before you to add the seven cars, um, and to. Uh, allow for the suitability of the overall plan, I don't think it's more intense. Or, uh, than what was actually there before, um. I don't believe, um. Yeah, again, it's, it's already existing to have the repair. And the storage of the vehicles in the rear part of, of the property. Um, I guess it's, it, it comes down to enforcement.
Okay, um, and is there anybody else here that wants to speak on this application? Is there anybody in the? Audience there? I don't see anybody on this list.
I'm, I'm going to, uh, hold on, let's see, no, no one has.
No.
And I just also wanna state that we did not receive any, um. You know, abutting properties, no one in support and no one opposed.
Okay.
We did not get any comments from, uh, any abutting property owners regarding this. No oppositions.
Okay. Alright, thank you, anybody else have any questions or can I close the public hearing?
Um, are, are we gonna be able to have comments before we vote?
We can, sure. We, we absolutely can.
I can do it now, I mean, like I said before, my issue is not so much with this applicant, but once we. Open the door, what happens thirty years down the road, and as far as town litigation, we all know how that drags on. Um, and, uh, I think we have to be very careful on what we do here. And. Because of the size of the site. And the adjacent properties, I, I don't think that this is a good fit.
Okay.
Hey, ju- just to reiterate, what, what's that said, this site is already approved for repair. So everything that we discussed, all the parking in the rear, everything's already approved, we're just adding. The used car section, we're adding seven cars that are gonna say for sale, other than that, he can already do everything.
Good.
I think they missed that opportunity at the other commission to, to put those restrictions in place.
Right.
Right, they're voting on those seven vehicles that are gonna be.
Right. Right, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the site in an industrial zone, but, you know, don't sell cars in.
So what happens if, if this is approved? Uh, if we agree with this and, and then. We drive by months down the road and there's more than seven cars for sale.
We drive by months down the road and there's more than seven cars for sale on the lot, what happens then?
Then we have to issue a cease and desist, we have to send in town officials, we have to bring in a town attorney. And three years later, we're still back at the same spot. And meanwhile, they've jammed so many cars in here, they're hanging out on the road.
Alright, I'm, if, if people do not have any questions for Linda or, or for the attorney. Uh, we can close the public hearing and we can just discuss this among the commission.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, everybody's set for that, right, so I can close the public hearing, okay, okay. Now, does anybody else wanna make any comments before we make a motion? No, you were done, Alan?
I'm good.
Alright, so, we need to have a motion to approve it first. And then if, if for so, if that doesn't pass, then we would make a, a motion to deny it. Um, do I have somebody to make a motion? Of five voting members?
Nobody makes a motion.
Huh?
What happens if nobody makes a motion?
Well, somebody has to make a motion. I don't know, you're the Roberts rules guy. If none of you make a motion, I guess I would have to make it as chair. But I figure somebody can make a motion, yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the applicant, they have to be in the affirmative, right?
It has to be in the affirmative, correct, and there has to be four affirmative votes.
Right. Prove the application, um, as presented.
Okay, with, 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 with the yearly inspection or a six month inspection, can we, can we put that in?
Yeah, with the yearly inspection.
Okay, okay, I need a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mark, thank you. Okay. And who's, eh eh, how many in favor of this motion? Okay, so I probably need to read off. The members so that we can get. Um, okay, Seth, are you in favor of the motion?
No.
Okay, Shirley?
No.
Mark?
Yes, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, Alan?
No.
Okay, and, um. Fortunately, I guess I am in favor of it, but. Because of the limited amount that the motion is for, so it's two people are in favor, three are against it. The motion does not pass, so now we need to go back and make it. To deny it, correct, Linda, just shake your head.
Well, um, you have to state in, 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 for the record, the reason for denial.
Well, eh, but that, that'll be in this next motion.
Oh, gotcha.
Right?
Okay, yep, okay.
Now I need a motion to deny it, Alan, do you wanna go with it?
I make a motion to deny the application of fifteen Southwood Drive. On the basis of the conformity to the neighborhood. Um, and the effect of the, uh, but, budding property owners, um. Period.
Okay, and. Second to the denial?
Second.
Wait, who, who did, Seth? Okay, and, and Seth has to state his reason also, or?
No.
No.
No, okay, alright, and all in favor of denying?
Alright.
And Alan? Uh, Shirley?
Uh, yes, I.
Alan?
Hi.
Okay, that's three, Mark?
No.
And I, I'll go with no, to be consistent, okay?
Alright.
Anything else that we need to do on that?
We stated the reasons why.
Okay. Okay.
Alrighty.
Alright. Moving, moving on to, uh. The minutes. Uh, any, any, uh. Any changes or, oh, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Um, and second, who seconded, I like to keep track.
I seconded.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Uh, any changes, any with the minutes?
No.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Anybody not in favor of approving the minutes?
No, I believe it was unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so. Um, Alan, do you wanna bring up I, the issue, I, I, I. First, I, I'm sorry, but I don't even know who Justin was, so when I first saw those emails, I had no idea. What those emails were.
Yeah.
But I think what happened, which is not a correct assumption, assumption is that. You had said you weren't gonna be able to make the meeting, so he didn't send it to you, but things change and you should have gotten.
Hmm.
That's, that's what happens, eh, am I correct with that, Linda, is that?
Uh, that could be uh, the possible, the reason why, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I, I just, you know, when. I figured because you mentioned you didn't receive it and, um. You know, it wasn't confirmed that you were going, uh, or you, you were gonna be in attendance because this was a special meeting and I had gotten already. Um, uh, the.
Well, you know.
It could be that I gave them the list of who was attending or who confirmed and he. It could have been, um, I, I, I don't know if that was the case though, because I don't.
Should go out to everybody.
It should definitely go out to every, you're absolutely right, I'm gonna see what happened, um, I can't. Say whether or not that was the case, um, we are still recording, did the meeting adjourned or?
I, I, no, because I had a concern, so I thought I'd bring it up. I mean, we could adjourn and discuss it, but I'd rather it be in the minutes.
Okay, sure, um, I, I will. Bring it to uh, his attention and Deshaun's attention and make sure that, uh. You know, it, it was the correct email, um, if there was an update in your email, please, um, let me know. Um, I know there was a couple of updates and I just gave it to. Uh, made sure that it was changed today with, with staff.
I mean, I, I, I have this concern every month because there were times where I couldn't get in and. What, you know, like Alan and I were emailing back and forth, but. I mean, how do we get in touch with you? Linda, if I'm sitting there, sitting there and I can't get into a meeting, into the meeting, I, I guess. Is, is there, um, are you at home, are you in your office, can we call the office, can we? Text you, is there some way, some backup method, if we're gonna keep doing this as a Zoom meeting and not in person? Then I think we have to, you know, feel like we can get in.
Okay, yeah, I will forward you my, um, cellphone, so that way you have it. Um, I have responded to the emails that do come in as I get. Um, I have my cellphone and I often check my email to make sure that I'm not missing, uh, you know. A, a contact or information that, that is needed for, for either the meeting, I'm. Pretty active on, with my phone and the words.
Yeah, I, I know, I know you are, it's just, it's just when I was sitting there, cuz. When Alan told me he didn't get the link and I said, well, I can't really do anything until we get on, because I know each link is. Specific to each person.
Yeah.
And so, I tried to get in at like twenty after figuring I can say, hey, Linda, can you send that to him? And then, of course, it was just kinda rolling around in there for ten minutes or, or eleven minutes, I. I was getting nervous that I wasn't gonna be able to get in.
I was getting nervous myself because for some reason, um. Zoom had upgraded and the computer wasn't updated. Uh, to the, to the version of the Zoom link, the Zoom that is, that I have. Um, and so I had to wait for that whole update to end, and I was just. Praying across my fingers that, you know, it would be done by seven thirty and it was a, a little over seven thirty, seven thirty.
So that shouldn't happen, is what you're saying, now.
I just, I didn't know that was gonna happen, so I, I do apologize about that, um. I, you know, sometimes the, the technology is great until, you know, you kind of hit a little bump. Um, and it's not, but I will make sure you all have my contact information. Um, and that the link regardless of whether or not you'll be in attendance should be sent to everyone for sure. Um, not sure why, why, why that happened.
Does, is David really on this board? David Caymans, I mean, has he ever, do we know if he was ever sworn in, has he ever been to a meeting?
I will, uh. I will confirm that with.
Seth or Alan know the answer to that?
The town clerk, I would have to check with the town clerk.
Um, alright, yeah, could you, could you, because if not, they should be appointing an alternate.
They should.
Okay, that, that's everything I have, does anybody have any other business before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so, I, I do, the next meeting is June fifth, correct?
Yes.
I will not be here, I'll be in Puerto Rico. So I won't be, I won't be able to attend the next meeting.
But you're gonna get a link anyway. Just in case you have nothing to do in Puerto Rico and you wanna zoom in.
And, um, I, I know it's none of my business, but, you know, David's wife passed away.
I do know.
And so, you know, uh, he lives right next door. And so, you know, I'm, I'm very, um, sensitive to what he's experiencing and.
Well, I, I know, I've seen also and I've talked to him, but I, I just. I, and it was kind of a sudden loss, so.
It was.
I know that, but I don't think he's been to a meeting in the two years he's, since he's.
Oh.
That, that was my comment, not the last five months, but.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I just would like to know where we stand with that, that's all.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move.
So move.
Okay, alright, we're all set then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any applications for June as of yet?
No.
Okay.
No application.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye bye.